...meetings act notice is hereby given that the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the charter of said city will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, September 19, 2017, at 5:45 PM and at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with executive session. Executive Session A: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
Mayor, I move we go to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will now begin with a regular meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, in these troubled times of earthquakes and hurricanes and military threats, we ask you to draw our hearts so close to you, Lord, that we receive your direction for ourselves personally and for our families and here tonight for our city, for our nation. Lord, we know your word says, "My sheep know my voice," and so help us to become close enough to you that we receive your guidance. And, Lord, we ask for that guidance tonight for the mayor and the commissioners and everyone that has anything to do with this meeting, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Action on item discussed in executive session? Action on item discussed in executive session?
Motion to proceed with advice by counsel.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mayor's activity update?
No, I just think it's a good time to reflect of our blessings because I'm always thinking about what would have been had Harvey come this way. So, I want to make sure that we're all mindful of the destruction that Maria is causing. And I see here that the deaths are over 100 people that already have been recorded death in that area. And also, they had an earthquake in Mexico City on the Richter scale of somewhere between 7.1 or 7.2 where 50 people have been reported already dead. So, Brad, we want to join the prayers that we had before and think of them right now, pray for them, and always be mindful that there but for the grace of God go on. So, that's just what's in my heart tonight. That's what I got.
Commissioners' activity update?
I would like to thank the TSC Architecture students as well as the University of Texas Architecture students for beginning their design class which will encompass the entire fall. They were here over the last four days talking to all of us, all interested parties, all different types and needs and so on and so forth, and had a wonderful weekend of design and creativity and needs. Dr. Rodriguez, the new president from TSC, joined us as well, and we all look forward to the design plans that they will generate on December 1st when they will present them to the city.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go to proclamations.
Next, we have proclamation, Raoul V. Martinez from Brownsville Umpire. Please come forward.
Whole family, because it takes a whole family to do the umpiring. Good?
Good to see you guys.
That's...and there's a star right down there. Hola, girl.
Mayor, it's truly an honor for me to recognize my good friend, Mr. Raoul Martinez, who happened to be my boss as a teenager when I worked at HEB. And the Martinez family, my brother Joe Martinez, and all of the family, Yoli and everybody, we've just been friends for so many years, Bell, and I mean, just everybody. And it's truly, you know, everybody was watching the TV because of the kids, and I was watching it just to get a glimpse of Raoul calling the game. So, truly, it's an honor to have, you know, have had Raoul represent us at the World Series for Little League. And I'm going to read this proclamation. This has been prepared in his honor. And the following is a proclamation of the city commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Raoul V. Martinez. Whereas in 1978, Raoul V. Martinez was asked to umpire at North Little League by then-league president Jose V. Martinez, Sr. Raoul continued to faithfully serve as a Brownsville Little League umpire until 1983 when he enlisted in the United States Army. Whereas in 1998, as Raoul's sons played baseball in the West Brownsville Little League, Raoul volunteered to umpire. Raoul went on to become the West Brownsville Little League's most accomplished volunteer by fulfilling the roles of coach, board member, vice president, and umpire in chief. Although his duties grew, Raoul's commitment to serve was unwavering. Whereas in 2006, Raoul Martinez was invited to umpire at the Texas West Little League Baseball Tournament and become the first umpire from the Rio Grande Valley to do so. This experience earned Raoul his first recommendation to umpire at the Little League Baseball World Series. Since 2006, Raoul has been invited to participate in every Texas West State Little League Baseball Tournament. In 2011, Raoul was appointed as umpire consultant to Little League District 24, which compromises all Little Leagues from Brownsville to Roma, Texas. In 2016, Raoul accepted a second invitation to umpire at the Little League Baseball Southwest Regional Tournament in Waco, Texas, and again received a recommendation to umpire at the Little League Baseball World Series. Whereas in December 2016, Raoul Martinez was notified by the Little League International Headquarters that he was one of 16 umpires selected from around the world to serve as an umpire at the 2017 Little League Baseball World Series from August 17th to the 27th, 2017, in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. This historic designation marked the first time an individual from the Rio Grande Valley was selected to umpire at the Little League Brownsville World Series, the largest youth baseball international tournament in the world. And whereas through his dedication to youth athletes in Brownsville, Texas, Raoul Martinez has earned international recognition. By virtue of his volunteer efforts as an umpire, Raoul has exemplified and instilled the core values of Little League, including leadership, character, courage, and loyalty for future generations. Now therefore, we the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Raoul V. Martinez and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate the everyday volunteers in our community who make Brownsville a better place. This is done the 19th day of September, 2017. Signed, Antonio Martinez, Mayor of Brownsville, and the City Commission. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Say if you're worried trouble. Play ball.
Play ball. First of all, thank you so much for this recognition. It was truly an honor to represent the city of Brownsville, the Rio Grande Valley, and the state of Texas in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. Like many of us, in the summers, we all tune into ESPN and ABC Sports, and we watch the Little Leaguers, go out there and try their best. And as an umpire, it's been my goal and my dream to umpire at the Little League World Series in Williamsport, Pennsylvania. I started that road back in 1978 when my dad, as president of North Brownsville Little League, asked me to volunteer because there were short of umpires. So, I did. And when my sons were playing at West Brownsville Little League, I continued. And that's where I got to meet many of the city commissioners and Charlie Kablers and a lot of the other people that have volunteered and given their time to the city of Brownsville. So, me personally, when I was at West Brownsville as an official, I really wanted to thank the city of Brownsville for everything that they've done in the Parks and Rec Department and helping to get the children of Brownsville to participate in sports activity. You just...our kids can grow and they can learn, and they become better leaders when they're out there participating in sports, be it baseball, softball, football, whatever it may be. But like Rick said, or the proclamation says, "It can't be done without volunteers." So, I too encourage the citizens of Brownsville to go out there and volunteer during local Little League parks or any youth organization. I'm not going to lie, in December 21st, when I got my golden ticket and the letter that came in from Little League International, I did shed a tear.
Sure.
Because I realized that I had accomplished a goal that I had set back in 2006, and that was to get to the Little League World Series in Williamsport. So, I tried really hard to, I guess, compose myself when I walked out of the dugout and onto that playing field in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, and all I can say is, "Thank God I was wearing sunglasses, or else I would have seen the tears." It was a great experience, one that I will never forget, and one that I'm glad that my family was able to share with me. At this time, not only would I like to thank the city of Brownsville, but I would also like to thank my biggest supporter, because without her and without her encouraging me for over 30 years to umpire, there's no way that I would have been able to make it to Williamsport and experience what I did. And with that, I'd like to thank my wife, Norma. Who had to put up with me being out almost every night from March till the end of July. And we always seem to spend our anniversary on a baseball field because it's on July the 6th, and I was always calling the game. But I tried to get scheduled in the Portisville South Padre Island area so we could go over and enjoy a nice dinner afterwards. But without her help and her support and her encouragement, this would not have been possible. Lastly, I would like to thank the city commission by giving you a little token. Every umpire, there are 16 that are worldwide. This year, we had one umpire from Australia, one from Canada, and two from Puerto Rico. And I again ask the citizens of Brownsville to please pray for the people of Puerto Rico and the Dominican because they are going through a rough time right now, and I can only think of what my two colleagues in Puerto Rico are going through, Edwin and Cardos. So, please keep them and their families in your prayers. But like I said, each umpire designs their own pin, and we give them out to the Little Leaguers. I had about 500 made, and they come looking for the umpire's pin. My umpire pin has an umpire calling a strike. There's a baseball, and in the center of the baseball is the state of Texas, and at the very tip of Texas is a palm tree to signify that I come from Brownsville, Texas. So, that I'd like to give you for your pin.
Well, Raoul, while you're handing out these wonderful pins, and Charlie, this pin will belong in our office here at the city. Raoul, I want to let you know that there's some young people out there that I see that are part of the leadership of Brownsville, and they come visit with us, and I know they get...some of them probably get a little bit of credit for it, but you're the perfect example of the field of dreams. The dreams do come true, guys, and there is a walking dream right there. It just so happens he plays a little baseball on the side, but it all belongs to that volunteer work that you guys are doing. So, keep up the good work, and if you've got any questions, want to know anything about what you need to do, there's a man to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through G.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Public hearings. Public hearing number five, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1631 to authorize the city manager to abandon and close a portion of a 20-inch alley and accept a new relocated 20-inch alley within West Evans Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Eduardo Santiago, Engineering Department. Basically, this is a swap of properties between the First Baptist Church and the City of Brownsville. The church would be able to connect its properties with another main access, and we will no longer have a dead-end alley. Our department recommends approval.
Okay. This is a public hearing in its first reading. Anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing. Would you close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six.
Public hearing number six, public hearing in action to authorize the city of Brownsville Police Department to apply for the fiscal year 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Application Number 2017-8H2578-TX and DJ in the amount of $53,038.
Is there someone here to present on this one? Charlie, are you going to present on this one?
This is a grant we apply for every year, and I would highly recommend we approve that.
Right. And there's anyone here on discussion on this one? We do this every year. If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Guess he's not interested in...
Would you close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve?
I hear a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-R057 to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling G for 1.92 acres for Lot 1 and 2 of Block 1 of Resaca del Norte subdivision located near Norma Pechero Lane and Angelina's Court.
Okay. So, this is 1.92 acres on Norma Pechero Lane. They're asking to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling G. The future land use plan does support it. It's in a city center district, which is predominantly single-family dwellings. As you can see, most of the properties surrounding it is single-family homes and also some vacant Planning and Zoning Commission does support this rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling G, and there was no written opposition.
Okay. Is there anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close. Close, public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-R058 to rezone from Professional Office A to Apartment G for 0.4060 acres for Lot 1, Block 50 of El Chaplin subdivision located at 616 North Central Avenue.
This is 0.406 acres on North Central Avenue. They're asking to rezone from Professional Office 1C-A to Apartment G. The future land use plan does support this. It's part of the Transition East District, which is mostly residential, comprised of single-family homes. As you can see, the surrounding area is a mix of single-family homes with some apartments mixed in and some professional offices as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission does support this rezone from Professional Office to Apartment G, and there was no written opposition.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close. Would you close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve? So, move?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-R059-CO to rezone from dwelling Z to light retail Z for Lot 1, Block 1 of Sylvia Estates located at 8895 FM 803.
This is one...just over one acre fronting FM 803. It's currently dwelling Z, and they would like light retail Z. The future land use plan does support this. It's part of a primary regional node, which should be a mix of commercial and some residential. And the commercial should serve the surrounding area as well as the region. Most of the surrounding area is single-family homes. However, there is some commercial mixed in. There's some to commercial, and also a little further south, it is industrial near the The Planning and Zoning Commission does support this rezone from dwelling Z to light retail Z with a conditional use overlay that prohibits onsite sales. There were 14 mailouts and no written oppositions to this as well.
Anyone here on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 10.
Public hearing number 10, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-R060 to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling H for 0.4467 for the northwest half lot 7 through 10 and southwest half lot 7 through 10 of Block 6 of Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision located at 305 West 16th Street.
Okay, this case and the next case are tied together. This one is requesting a change from dwelling A to dwelling H, and the next case is a specific use to allow apartments at this location. It is 0.4467 acres, and it's fronting West 16th Street. It's part of the town corridor, which should be mostly single-family homes. It does support...the future land use plan does support this. Here is the aerial. There is a mix of single-family homes and apartments surrounding it. It's also next to the Banden Railroad and PUB's water treatment facility. Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend to support this rezone from dwelling A to dwelling H, and there was no written opposition to this case.
Is anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11.
Public hearing number 11, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-R060-S to allow apartments in dwelling H for 0.4467 for the northwest half lots 7 through 10 and southwest half lot 7 through 10 of Block 6 of Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision located at 305 West 16th Street.
Okay, so this is the same area we were just talking about. They're looking for apartment H use in dwelling. Here is the site plan. They're proposing eight apartments. These are two-story duplexes. And the Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend to support the specific use permit, allowing apartments in dwelling H, and there was no written opposition to this as well.
Okay. Anyone here on this issue? Would you close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
Public hearing number 12, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-901 to rezone from light retail G to dwelling G, Olive Canyon Valley subdivision located on Menchaca Court.
So, this is a city-initiated case. This subdivision was originally intended to be a duplex subdivision. However, there was a duplex ordinance that was passed last year that makes duplexes not allowed in light retail, so we're asking to change that to dwelling G so that duplexes can be allowed. This is the future land use plan. It does support changing this. It's part of the town corridor as well as the Transition Central District. And here is an aerial. You can see that to the south, there are apartments, and to the north and the west, there are single-family homes, and a warehouse to the right.
Like at the last meeting, I'll ask once again, was anybody inconvenienced during this process?
No, I don't believe so. We're actually doing this to make it easier instead of each applicant having to...each property owner having to apply to rezone or get a specific use. We'd like to change it altogether to simplify the process.
Yeah, but like you said, last year, it was turned down.
Yes.
So, in the process, had somebody applied and we inconvenienced them in any way, keeping them from a project from going through because of the ordinance that existed at that time?
I don't believe so. As you can see in the pictures, there are several properties that have already been constructed. Some of these, there's a triplex, and they would be grandfathered in under this, even though right now they're in commercial, they would be allowed under dwelling.
Anyone here on this issue?
Somebody's here. I am. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This...
If you don't mind, you'll have to give your name for the record.
My name is Kathy Presas Garcia, and I'm a Texas licensed Realtor. I work for Nexus Real Estate. And this one item, I guess they're bringing it back to the commission, and this is what happened, that the developer had paid for the project to be duplex, but somehow the city decided to remove it or to cancel it from being a duplex. So, one of my clients, Dr. Garcia, got bothered because she never received a notice that it had been changed from the dwelling, I believe, G to dwelling...with the dwelling that they want to take it back. But when I came to the city, and I got to share this with you, I questioned, "Okay, so you mean to tell me that the developer paid to be zoned for duplex?" It was presented back to the commission to change it from duplex to, I guess, single residential. Because what happened was that I had listed a property that was zoned for duplex, and I get a call from another Realtor says, "You can't be selling that property as a duplex." And I said, "What do you mean, I can't sell it as a duplex? That's how it's zoned." He says, "No." The city commissioners and the mayor changed it. It's no longer zoned for duplex. I called my client, and she was pretty upset, and she says, "Well, I purchased this property for a duplex site. Who decided to change it without, you know, sending any notifications?" So, I came to the city. I saw...it so happened that I ran into the developer. I had no idea who the developer was. So, I told the developer, "My client has been looking for you because you're the developer. You sold her a property that was zoned for duplex, and it's not duplex." He says, "Wait a minute. I have all the documentation. I purchased this land, and when I submitted my documentation to the city, it was approved for duplex. So, now you have 16 lots there that have not been built. You have some already that are built." But then the other 16 owners were not aware that it had been voted to be changed to single residential homes. So, you had 16 owners there that were pretty upset because they never got a notification. They couldn't build a duplex. Not only that, but they were being taxed for multifamily, which means that if I get my taxes at the end of the year for an empty lot that's multifamily, that means it's for duplex. It's not for a single-family residential. So, we have a serious issue with this item if it doesn't go back to what it's...what it used to be. And the girls have...were made aware of it, but my question when I came and I talked to them was like, "Okay, so now, if I'm the owner of a lot, now I have to pay again to rezone it back to a duplex, which is, I think it's unfair." So, if this is...this doesn't pass, the people that bought all those 16 lots can literally sue the developer also. So, we have a serious issue with this item. So, I just thought I...because I'm one of the Realtors that was selling one of the lots as duplex.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Anna?
So I just wanted, go ahead, sorry.
So where do we stand?
So dwelling G, which is what we're requesting, should allow the property owner to build a duplex.
But like Ms. Presas said, they will have to start the process all over again.
They don't have to do anything.
They don't have to do anything.
It will be allowed by law.
I think we're on the same side with her on this.
I don't know if there's some confusion, but this doesn't, or this change should be, should let them do it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other people here on this issue?
Would you close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, public comment period. We did have three people sign up. We only have two present now. The first one is Ms. Teresa Saldivar. Or maybe she left too. We did have Mr. Pedro Arandez. He's not here either. And then we had Ms. Catalina Presas. I don't know if she still wants to speak.
Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. You know, I'm here today because I know that you guys have a very, very tough job. And it's unfortunate when we read, when we see, when we hear. You know, Brownsville is a beautiful city. It really is. I've been a leader myself. I know that it's tough to make some decisions, but sometimes we just need to make sure that we set precedents, and that we do lead by example. I know that many, many years ago, I had the opportunity to work for, and work with the manager, city manager, and we worked in a department that were, the law is the law. And I personally knew him. He was one of our best officers on the force, very strong will, strong mind. There's so much going on, but until you all decide to do what's right, and what I mean by right is that there's policy and procedures everywhere we go, whether we work at a hospital, whether we work, you know, at the courthouse, we have to abide by policy and procedures, which is basically is you're setting law into place. To have people, our own employees, to either, you know, threaten their administration or threaten the public out there and think that they're above the law is wrong. It's wrong. I'm telling you, it's not good for the city of Brownsville. I was reading an article, the city of Brownsville is on this article. The city of Brownsville is all over this article, and it says, more corruption in South Texas than rest of the state, study finds. We can't allow this. A lot of people have worked very, very hard to put Brownsville where we're at, whether it's an empire, an umpire that went to the World Series, whether it's our own students that win a silver medal lifting weights. There's people trying very hard to put us on the map. But when we have individuals that cannot abide by their policy and procedures, and they feel that they are untouchable, it's wrong. Whether they're our friends, whether they're our family members, the law is the law. So I'm here to ask that if this is happening in the city with top administration, please put a stop to it. Please. I ask wholeheartedly because it's not right for the citizens. It's not right for any of you. Because one takes the blow, everybody else takes the hit, and it's very unfair. So you're the leaders, grab the bull by the horn, make the right decision. I know that when I worked in the police department, there was such a thing called insubordinate. Do not allow that.
Thank you. Next item.
Items for individual consideration. Action item number fourteen, consideration action to award a contract for the installation of flow meters.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is David Lequon. I'm with the City of Brownsville Engineering Department. I come before you to ask for approval for a contract that we're putting in place for flow meters. If you recall, we've spoken about the flow meters a few times at the drainage reports. We've had one applicant go, that filled out the forms and put a bid in, and they were four thousand dollars above what we expected, but within reason. I think that's about a two percent of per change or above what we expected it to be. So we're right in line where we want it to be. This is a pilot program, so we're only going to do four to start out to make sure that kind of what we want to set up as far as the network is going to work in the city, and then we'll see where it goes after that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number fifteen.
Action item number fifteen, consideration action to authorize the carryover of unspent funds from fiscal year twenty seventeen to fiscal year twenty eighteen for the Gladys Porter Zoo, City Library, Fire, and Parks Departments for sixty-eight thousand, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, and three hundred and forty thousand respectively.
Honorable members, City Commissioners, this item is requesting authorization to carry over unspent fiscal year twenty seventeen funds into twenty eighteen. This would allow the departments to continue the procurement process in order to procure much-needed capital-related expenditures, and then the zoo is to carry over the funds that are not going to be spent, that just got awarded in the month of September.
Approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number sixteen, consideration in action to authorize and execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville Police Department in Cameron County, Texas, regarding fiscal year twenty seventeen Edward Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Application, twenty seventeen dash H twenty-five-seventy-H dash TX dash DJ in the amount of fifty-three thousand thirty-eight dollars.
Mayor, City Commission, this action item is just merely to get into an interlocal agreement between Cameron County and City of Brownsville on the grant that we'll be applying for, for the fifty-three thousand thirty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen.
Action item number seventeen, consideration in action to award the lowest bidder Kiko Construction of Harlingen, Texas for the installation of a replacement roof dome and associated repairs for the La Plaza at Brownsville multimodal terminal in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm R.J. Garza, B Metro Assistant Director, and with me is our Facilities Coordinator, Jeffrey Stewart, who will be overseeing this project along with K Plus Architect, Stanford Knowles? And Assistant City Engineer, Doro Garcia. This project initially started due to a fire incident causing extensive damages to the dome and construction at La Plaza Terminal. We have received funding from T M L Insurance to complete this project. The City of Brownsville received two bids, and the lowest responsive bidder was Kiko Construction of Harlingen, Texas, in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for the replacement of the dome and related construction repairs. The attached bid is based on K Plus Architects' construction drawings and specifications, which have been reviewed and approved by the Engineering Department Directors. Funding for this project is also, is available through an established account. The cost for the installation of the construction repairs is one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and the cost of the fabrication of the dome was thirty-four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. B Metro staff concurs with the recommendations of the review committee, which consisted of the following departments: Purchasing, Engineering, City Manager's Office, B Metro, and K Plus Architects, and humbly request to approve, to award this contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Kiko Construction, in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
So the money that we're going to spend to rebuild the dome is coming from T M L?
Yes. So it's the insurance? It's all fully funded through T M L.
So it was insured when the fire happened, and they paid for everything?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you're okay tonight. I'm going to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen.
Action item number eighteen, consideration action to approve purchase of four new Ram pickup trucks vehicles for the City of Brownsville Public Works Department.
Do a adjourn?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commission, Martino Trevino Assistant Public Works Director. The department is requesting approval for the purchase of four twenty seventeen Dodge Ram pickup trucks from Grapevine Dodge for the total amount of one hundred and four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. That includes options two and five on the bid tab. New vehicles will serve as either replacements and/or additions to the existing department fleet. Units that are replaced will be decommissioned and placed on the city auction or assigned to another division. The new units are to be assigned between department management and supervisors. Funding for this procurement is currently in place under Seal Funds eighty-eight and eight oh one. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Would you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.